Call the regular city commission meeting on Tuesday, July 9th, 2013 to winter. May we stand for the pleasurable evening? Sorry.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we take roll?
Commissioner Bushi.
Here.
Commissioner Crisier.
Here.
Commissioner Perry.
Here.
Commissioner Ravino.
Here.
Mayor Castelli.
Here. Next item is consideration of the following minutes. Public hearing and zoning board of appeals meeting held Tuesday, June 11th, 2013. And public hearing and regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, June 11th, 2013. Is there a motion?
Some move, Mr. Mayor. To approve each?
Yes, please.
Is there support?
Support.
Since we've already got our tax bills. May I take a vote?
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushi?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the June 2013 dispersment report. Amy.
Payroll and accounts payable for the month of June was provided to all of you prior to the meeting. Payroll for the month was $65,410.59. And accounts payable was $272,246.09.
Questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that June dispersment report be approved as listed.
Is there support?
Support.
May I take a vote?
Commissioner Bushi?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is public discussion items not on the agenda.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jay Foreman. I live at 79 Maplefield. I'm up here tonight to tell all of you some things that you probably already know. The first is that Pleasant Ridge is an amazing city to live in. And we're a city of beautiful homes and friendly neighbors. You may take many different paths to arrive here, but the common sentiment is that once we're here, we don't want to leave. There's something very special in this town and it's something that I think it's hard to put into words and describe to a friend who may not live here. There are so many special things, so many great things about living in Pleasant Ridge, but really, to me, it's more of a feeling that you get. I got that first inkling very soon after I moved in. It was probably just two days we'd been in our house when I met a member of our police department who showed me the ropes with the many prohibited turns throughout the city. Free of charge eventually. A few days later, we took the dog for a walk for the first time and met a neighbor that just decided to say hello to us for no reason away from their front porch. And we saw more neighbors that were doing that. My wife, Mary, and I kept commenting to each other just how different it felt to live in Pleasant Ridge compared to the many cities we lived in before. Soon after that, another walk, we met another neighbor that invited me to join the Pleasant Ridge Men's Club and take our son on the annual Father's Day camping trip. The trip was a great experience and we met lots of other neighbors there. We also learned about the Pleasant Ridge Club, which we joined and met lots more neighbors. Fun, social settings, often in someone's backyard. It was just amazing to us how friendly, down-to-earth, and accepting everyone was here. Was there something in the water? I don't know. It just seemed unlike anywhere else we had lived before. It just seemed like home. Pleasant Ridge is my home, and I feel both proud and fortunate to be able to live and raise my children here. As a member of the Recreation Commission, I've had the privilege to participate in so many events that I feel so strongly reinforce our sense of community here. From flipping pancakes at the annual pancake breakfast to, well, flipping something else, flipping brats at the fall hayride. I've had the chance to be a part of so many things that I think just make memories for our kids and our families here, including my own. We just have so many unique amenities here, and all of them are fueled by the people who live here. Pleasant Ridgers are always willing and ready to donate their time, donate their money to their city because we're all neighbors and here that means something. This city inspires me, and that's why I'd like to announce that I'm running for city commissioner this November. I know that this is a serious commitment and I know it's a lot of work. That's why the first thing I'd like to do is to thank our current commissioners and mayor for all that they've given to this great city over the years. Now, to be honest, running for public office is something that if you'd asked me five years ago, I would have never envisioned myself doing, ever. But I feel Pleasant Ridge has given me and my family so much that I'd like to give something back. I want to work with and work for my neighbors to maintain and to strengthen these things that makes Pleasant Ridge so special. And there are a lot of them. I want to keep Pleasant Ridge moving forward, and I want to be a part of the solution. I want to be part of the bright future that lies ahead. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else items not on the agenda?
No.
Sharon Verret, 14 Neighbors.
You're gonna have to be quicker about that. Yeah, cut her off, Sharon.
Is there...I sent Sharon an email. I know she's been busy. But do city groups have to pay to use the facilities for meetings? We, last year, had our Thursday morning coffee clashes down at the Gainesboro Shelter. And we wanted to begin again this year, but I've been concerned because we had to pay $50 for the plant exchange. So I wanted to find out, we're not gonna hold, you know, we can't hold meetings there if it's gonna be $50 every time we meet.
Well, it comes down to what's the definition of a city group? And a city group is not every group of people that decide they want to use a community building because otherwise the concept of running out of use of the community buildings gets gutted because everybody's a city group. When has it been recognized as, Sherry, the groups have supported the city? Like the foundation, the garden club, and maybe one of...
The junior commissions, it's a handful. The junior commissions, the foundation, the women's club, the garden club.
Were you able to find out anything about my request last month about becoming a recognized affinity group within the city?
Sharon, I can't remember what you said in your memo.
These groups are organized as nonprofit groups. They have a board, they have articles of incorporation, bylaws. I can't remember what else I put in there.
I don't want to see.
I don't even know what some of them are organized as.
That's the tax status.
I understand.
Do they need to have that tax status or legal?
No, that tax status has to do with whether or not they have tax-exempt income, and they have to have income before that matters. But, you know, the Pleasant Ridge Club doesn't get free use of the buildings. Pleasant Ridge Club was the first government of the city of Pleasant Ridge. The Culinary Club doesn't get free use of the building. The Fairwood Block Club doesn't get free use of the building. It's not a group of neighbors who decide to get together.
So with, I guess, and then this actually slightly shifts the conversation of the usage of like the Gainesboro Shelter. And is it something that could be opened more regularly so that, you know, people could casually gather there even, you know, without it having to be a special function? Like if just some moms were gonna have, you know, gather for a playdate in the morning? And would it be able to be open more regularly so people could actually utilize it in a function like what Sharon, I think, is talking about?
Well, that, obviously, that's up to you, and I think it should be considered by the Recreation Commission. But when Sharon first approached me about it, it literally was described as a coffee lounge.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, of course, I said, "You and your neighbors are welcome to use the shelter" because I didn't think it was anything formal or any kind of organized group, you know, per se. In fact, I offered the coffee and, you know, the tables and all of that. I later learned that it actually is a somewhat organized group. I can't remember.
Well, we do get an email list.
Yeah. And I, you know, I don't know if there's a purpose to the group other than, I don't know, you know, the plant exchange. I don't know if that was part of that group or if that was your neighborhood.
Yeah, it was.
So, and of course, if anybody wants to use it, like the garden club or whoever, that would be, you know, obviously would be open. But I think the City Commission needs to consider it because you could be opening, I guess you could be opening that for anyone who wanted it. And, you know, if a block club wants it, for example, I think Wellesley one time had their block party, and they wanted maybe to extend to the park. I don't think the city would have any problem with that.
It's such a nice facility and, you know, to have it, especially, you know, through these summer months, it would be so nice to have it more accessible to, you know, think of book clubs or, you know, playdates and things like that.
What the coffee houses that, you know, were in the park, it's nice to have that facility there. But I don't know, I don't know how specific you want it to be. It's pretty much been left up to city managers discretion in advance. This one, like I said, I think when the question was posed last month about it being a group, it's like, well, you know, what's the purpose of the group? So I give it to you.
Thank you.
My only question is...
We'll keep talking. You can sit.
Right. It's such a nice building that I think it could be, especially, you know, we have so few months of really great weather, but, you know, using a, such a neat building like that just to have it open on some regular hours so people know.
But there's no employee to put there regularly. So you can't have it open like Four Ridge is unless you budget to put a person there to police the building.
Right. I wouldn't recommend you just leave the doors open, but I think that you have to consider, the City Commission should consider who can use the building and no charge. We can always open the building.
I think it's gotta be a scheduled thing unless we have in the budget somebody who's permanently sitting there at a desk.
Is there a way to use something, you know, how the dog park has been facilitated of having a pass card type thing, situation for that? Because it's, I imagine that technology has gotten more affordable, you know, with, if we're using it at the dog park, it might be something that, you know, they could shut down at a certain hour at night more securely.
Oh, and actually, you know...
Now, you have to come back to the microphone.
I'm sorry. Not a problem. And actually, you know, when we have met there, we have met parents who were, you know, playing with their kids, who were just so happy that the restrooms were open and, you know, and we had talked about that, and I know I've mentioned it to Sherry, about having a swipe card like the dog park and having people who, parents whose kids play soccer or softball, you know, if they want access to it, you know, paying like I do at the dog park for the swipe card to get in, out, you know, close it at a certain time every day, permanent, you know, overnight. And the other thing is, I just always felt so bad because I know a lot of people make fun of that building, but I always felt it was a little orphaned, and it was always just full of junk and it's, you know, from the rec center. And it was always lit all night, and I walk my dogs over there, and it's always, um, it always looked forlorn. So I kind of liked to see it used in a better purpose.
There was a time when Cub Scouts met there, karate was taught there.
Mm-hmm.
There were a number of groups who used it when it was first built, and then it fell into no one who wanted to use it. It's good to see people want to use it again.
Yes, I do.
And you planted beautiful plants there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would just like to say that I think we should be encouraging use of the structure. And if it comes to a decision by this body, I don't think it would be too much to ask of us, you know, per request basis to maybe set up a schedule and say if somebody is willing to take responsibility, here's the keys, and then, you know, we can approve while, you know, consoling with Sherry as far as, you know, the use of the building. But I think the more groups we get using it, I think it's healthy for Gainesboro. I think it's healthy for the community. If people are looking for places to gather, that's the obvious one. And we shouldn't be holding back the keys or, you know, requesting $50, you know, for our residents to be able to use that. I do think it warrants further discussion, and I wouldn't want to make a decision tonight. But I do think usage of that building is something that, you know, holds possibilities.
Well, part one, in making that decision, and I agree with the broad press, but making that decision, one has to be cognizant of the fact that we charge for residents to have wedding receptions, showers, whatever, in the multipurpose rooms of Four Ridge. And one could have a small shower, maybe not a wedding reception, same types of get-togethers in that building. And I think we need to be consistent. And the money that comes in from events may not be the money that moves the budget, but it's still money that's in the budget. I think it takes some study as far as what we're gonna do there, what the rules are gonna be. And we may very well decide to have inconsistent rules with Four Ridge and that building just due to the size of the building. But that needs to be a decision that's studied and made, knowing that they're inconsistent.
Maybe that's something we can send to the Recreation Commission and look at.
I think that's the appropriate place to start.
Yeah, figure out the costs.
Martha Schlesinger, 38, Deshaysure. A night, I think, of just clarification. I thought it was terrific that part of the coffee hour was televised last week. And I just wondered if there, because there seemed, I was only able to stay for part of it, and at eight o'clock, it went dark. So I wondered, A, what are the rules, the timetable, what goes into, who can use the Pleasant Ridge camera and telecasting? Is there a place I could go? I looked through the materials I had, and I didn't see anything. So if anybody could inform me and through this meeting, the rest of the city.
Look, coffee houses are not filmed deliberately. It's, the premise was that residents would be more comfortable with a less formal setting and knowing that there's no videotape and, you know, feel more free to talk. And this is something that is available for the city use. We use it sometimes for events, as you know. We'll bring in the camera for that. But coffee houses, they won't, scheduling filming, I have no plan of scheduling filming in the future unless there is some kind of special speaker invited that we may want to record about.
Then what was the criteria used to allow the hours presentation before, as part of the coffee thing on last week Tuesday?
The idea was that Mr. Gillis, having been the city attorney for 28 years, 28 years, was gonna share some history of the city, and so I just thought it would be an interesting record to have on file with the city. That was it.
I was just surprised that it was televised, and I didn't know it because I was here and when I went back. A neighbor said to me, "Why was the first hour televised, and then when the group started talking, the thing went blank?" So I thought, there's gotta be some kind of a policy or process that people can go through if they wanted to use it or do something like that.
To be quite honest, I had no intention of televising this. It was really, the purpose was to keep a record of it. And after that, I was on vacation, and my most competent staff thought that because it was filmed, it must be meant to be posted like a city commission meeting, but no.
It was televised that night?
Pardon me?
It was televised that night?
It was televised live, but I didn't think it was gonna, it wasn't gonna be like a city commission meeting where it was rerun and rerun and rerun, all put on YouTube.
Okay. So it's only city commission?
Yes.
And city, official city business?
Yes.
Like the hearings that go on for local licenses and things like that? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items not on the agenda?
I'll be quick, I promise. Hi, I'm Cindy Wilcock, 160, Maplefield. I would first like to just thank our awesome police department. Last week, my very observant neighbor had noticed a car driving very slowly down our street and noticed that same vehicle pull into my driveway shortly after I left. They called the police. They were very receptive. They were very, very on it, although they didn't apprehend anybody doing anything. They definitely were out and about and checking on things, so I really appreciate that they're there. And of course, that I have awesome neighbors that look out for me when I'm not home, even though I was only gone for two minutes. And secondly, on behalf of the Ferneal DDA, we would like to invite everybody to join us next Thursday as we kick off the first of three outdoor movies on Besker Street. We will be showing Mamma Mia, the sing-along version. And we will be having folks from the Detroit Actors Theater Company join us to help kind of lead that sing-along. The movies are free in our Besker Street at dusk, and we would love it if our neighbors in Pleasant Ridge could come out and join us. So if you've got any questions, there's more information on our website, which is downtownferneal.com. So I hope to see somebody out there.
Dusk is approximately 8:30.
Dusk, probably 8:30-ish, yeah. We'll start, you can come anytime after 6:30. The street will be closed down. You can set up, bring your lawn chairs, bring your blankets, set them up, wander around town, hang out. We'll probably have some other fun stuff going on, but the details are still working out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mike DeCoster, 26 Kensington Boulevard. And I just would like to talk to you about, tonight, about an idea that I've had for a little bit that I've been trying to advance. I'm an architect by profession and urban designer through education. And I believe that urban design affects our quality of life in many ways. So one idea that I had was to advocate for the proposal of capping 696 similar to what has occurred in Oak Park and other cities across the country such as Dallas and Columbus. I've been personally trying to advocate for that position at this time, understanding this is a very expensive endeavor and it will take a lot of time and a lot of effort. But also understanding that the federal government's gonna spend $35 billion in southeast Michigan over the next 25 years. It's a matter of political will about getting money directed towards certain projects, in my belief. I've talked, I think this is a good idea for both our community and the communities around us. I think it would help our downtown area, it would help us connect better to Southern Royal Oak and back and forth, vice versa. I think it would help economic development in the area. I've spoken to Saint Representative Lipt, County Neptun, and County Commissioner Henry Zach, and they both support the idea. I've contacted Sandra Levin's office, and although he can't support it, this time he thinks it's a good idea and recommended that I go to stakeholders in the area such as the city commissions of Royal Oak, Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, as well as SNCOG and MDOT. And that's what I'm currently doing right now. So I think at this point, what I respectfully request is that the city commission consider this a good idea and that it warrants further study. So I would, this was brought up in the planning commission earlier this year, and there was some concern that they wanted to hear what the city commission thought about it before the planning commission acted on it. So I, again, I respectfully request that the city commission file a resolution supporting the idea of a study to cap 696 to understand the costs, what could be the potential of doing that, what could be placed over there, and understand, again, like what the costs and implications of that would be.
Now, I understand that you called Congressman Levin's office, and they returned the call.
Correct.
And when I talked to the congressman's chief of staff and talked about doing this type of project with federal funds, her first response was, quote, "Good luck with that." Earmarks are dead. Did you contact MDOT as well?
I have not yet contacted them, but I'm in the process of doing so.
Sherry, what would be your understanding of the MDOT situation?
I...
I thought you did contact them. You actually posted their response.
I did, I did. I have, yes, I did, I actually did contact them. I understand this is going to be a difficult process. My point is, do you think it's a good idea or not? Because, because I understand there's gonna be a lot of roadblocks, and it's gonna take a very long time and a lot of political will to do this. That's not the issue here. The issue is, do you think it's a good idea or not?
Well, from my perspective, this is an idea that was proposed to Pleasant Ridge some 25, 30 years ago, and Pleasant Ridge intentionally turned it down. And part of the reason that Pleasant Ridge turned it down was, A, the desire to get money out of condemnation cases opposed to a capping in the freeway. And B, concerned that they didn't want that connectivity, especially to the zoo area. Because at that point in time, and I would submit it probably would be the same again, if you have an easy path straight across from Four Ridge to the zoo, whenever there's an event that, such as adopted dog or whatever else that has the zoo parking overflowing, that the free parking for the zoo is gonna become Pleasant Ridge once again. We turned it down before. Reasons that went into Oak Park were different than economic development. They were more religious oriented at the time. They've also caused issues that weren't anticipated at the time insofar as concern about flammable trucks, which now are banned from going under there, being able to use that as a route. From my perspective, looking at the budgets as they exist in the cities, in the state, in the feds, and our history on the issue, I personally don't think it's a good idea. And I personally think it's a waste of our resources to be chasing that, especially to be participating in funding any type of study.
I'm not asking for funding at this point, though.
Well, someone's gonna have to fund this study.
I think at this point, it's premature to ask for funding for anybody until we understand if there's support for it. And so that's what I...
I don't know that we have enough information based on your presentation to support it. What did MDOT say in response to your inquiry?
I don't recall exactly. It was quite a long email. It was not...
Was it warm and friendly and welcoming?
It wasn't negative. It was balanced and, and just outlined the concerns, the concerns of forward doing it and against doing it.
Well, it would be premature to ask this body to do anything without having the opportunity to at least look at that document.
I can forward you that.
Where's Royal Oak's getting it, Mr. Gary, do we know?
Well, a little bit of history about this. Mr. DeCoster did bring this up some time ago at the planning commission meeting. And it first was, first he brought it up in an email to me, and I did tell him a little bit of the history that you just explained and asked. At that time, he wanted to send a letter to our other governmental agencies and elected officials. And I asked him not to do that, that any letter requesting funding would have to come from the governing body. And at that time, no one even knew about it. In October of last year, I wrote a two- or three-page memo to the planning commission explaining the reason that this did not go forward from the planning commission, in effect, asking for funding because they did not have the authority to do that. And again, I explained the history that you just told. I think we talked briefly about it at a joint workshop with the planning commission. And at that time, the idea was, and as I explained to Mr. DeCoster, this is something that if the city commission wants to look at, you would direct me to start that process. I had a conversation only with the mayor of Royal Oak. I haven't had a chance to talk about this topic with the city manager. And there were two topics. One was capping over 696, and the other was the possibility of maybe closing Main Street. He, his reaction to closing Main Street was immediate, and he was somewhat surprised and said, you know, "I hope Pleasant Ridge isn't gonna consider these kinds of projects without Royal Oak being involved." And as you know, about three or four years ago, I did sit down with the WA3, Royal Oak, the zoo, and Huntington Woods to talk about improvements to that intersection. And I said, "Absolutely not, we would not do that." So I am a little bit concerned that some of the agencies have been contacted because I would rather sit down, if you want to pursue this, I would rather first sit down with our neighbors. If any letter's gonna come out, it would be authorized by the governing bodies and certainly signed by them, quite all of them. And that's the only conversation that I've had with Royal Oak with respect to this.
I have had...
I'm sorry, Mike. The MDOT letter that I read, they estimated that this project could cost up to a half a billion dollars. a billion dollars. Congressman Levin's office said that, in their conversation, that estimated funding for a project like this, they didn't have, they didn't really even have a clue because the cost is so great. But they said, their words to me was something to the effect that it would, it would require the state of Michigan to dedicate its entire budget for road funding for at least one year, possibly two. So, and MDOT in their letter says, and Levin's office said as well, that the chances of this happening anytime soon or in the near future are nil.
Well, if I may, and Mike has emailed me on this, and we've talked about it, and I, I don't care if we have a big hurdle to haul here, I have no problem, someone's willing to take it on, but I guess my real concern here is that I would prefer this to go through the planning commission DDA. Now, I know it was talked about funding, if I could get a support from that junior body, which that's what they're there for, come to the city commission with the support, I would support it, I'm not going to support it without the junior commission coming to us, and I thought I made it very clear to you, because I think it's, I think I gave you a lot of credit for going after it, and I mean, I know it's a long, you know, it's an uphill battle, and if that's something that the planning commission DDA want to take on, and you want to afford it, or, you know, go forefront with it, I'll support it, but I mean, at this time, I gotta be honest with you, I'm disappointed that you didn't go to the planning commission DDA first and ask for their support, if not for funding, but just to general support the concept or the idea, bring it to the city commission, and the city commission, I would support it if not.
I appreciate that, and I do plan to bring it to the fourth planning commission. Unfortunately, my commission name was canceled before.
I know, and I know, wasn't I?
And it's not, it's a thing of scheduling, and it's not...
Right, I understand, and I'm not trying to be, you know, but I just want you to know, and I thought I made it very clear in the email that I would support this if it went through the, you know, proper routine.
Sherry, would you follow up with the Royal Oak city manager, and if one of you could forward to all of us the letter from MDOT, I would appreciate that.
Yes.
Should Huntington Woods have a dog in this hunt, are they impacted?
They do, in the zoo.
I've talked to the planning, the planning officials at Huntington Woods and Royal Oak, and they are both interested in this concept.
Have you talked to the mayor?
I did talk to the mayor of Huntington Woods, I've not talked to the mayor of Royal Oak.
Mayor, part of this, I think, is the confusion that's being caused. As I said, Mr. DeCosta was asked not to contact these entities, and to go back to them now as the city with any kind of official request, I mean, it just leads to more explaining. So I would ask that he not contact our new...
I'm acting as a private citizen advocating an idea, I'm not sure it's right for the city, city government to try to...
No, of course they can't censor you, I'm just, I'm asking you, if the city wants to look into this, then it should come from the city.
Well, and also, excuse me, Mayor, the, you know, Mr. DeCosta is also on the Alternatives Analysis and the Complete Streets Committees, and that is where he's talking to these people, because this is a, this is an idea that is right in the middle of all the discussions we're having with complete streets and transit, because it is the perfect solution for a transit station. You know, I mean, we look at, as we're talking about, I mean, and these are federal funds that we're talking about, not even state funds, and so, you know, I mean, some of it will be state, you know, with all the transit stuff, but also, you know, federal funding is a part of this, and nobody says it's easy and that this money is just waiting there, but this is where Mr. DeCosta has been having these conversations, I've also had these conversations with the planning commission, planning...
But Commissioner Perry, this is where you've got so many hats on. I don't go doing the city manager's administrative job, contacting other communities about things, and then step back and say, "I'm only a citizen." When he's got a hat on, on all those committees, and when he's got a hat on as a member of the planning commission, are you still on the planning commission DDA? People view him differently, he can say all he wants, I'm just acting as an individual citizen. He's got too many hats on, it muddies the water.
Well, as a city commissioner, I'm on those committees, and I do talk to them as a commissioner about this exact topic.
As a commissioner?
Absolutely. I mean, and, I mean, and Mr. DeCosta is on there with me, I mean, he has the idea, and so, you know, going through the planning commission first, just because I know you've tried to bring it to the planning commission before.
I'm sorry, I don't, I've been there, I don't, I'm sorry, I know he brought up funding, but never brought up anything as far as asking for support.
The one meeting that I attended, I had made a comment to you that the proper procedure you must follow, follow is get your planning commission behind the DDA, present to the city commission, because, I guess my first question to you is, when you address these people, how do you address yourself? Do you say you're a member of the planning commission? Or a member of WA Three, or any of that?
No.
But you have to remember, as being part of those groups, and they find out you're part of that group, think the city's involved in it, and we don't even know what you're doing. And I think you really need to follow those chain of events, because I don't know if it's a bad idea or not, but there's a lot of information that I would need. Number one, if it is federal money, state money, there's going to be matching money that has to come from this municipality, and do we have the money to do that? If you go and get all these people to get involved in it, and we can't afford it, we're going to look very foolish. So I think it's really imperative that you get the planning commission on board, come to the city commission, and then let's move forward with that.
I appreciate the comments that you think the planning commission needs to support this, because that was a different direction than I was indicated in previous discussions, that the city commission needed to say something on this before the planning commission. From other, not from you, Sherry, but from other people.
Oh, I see.
Probably earlier than that, I would be very clear with them.
Well, it seems a bit like you're being sent back and forth, and I don't want to...
Yes, it's, that's what I feel.
That's not right, it's not fair, but they act one way, the other, for or against.
I would suggest we have Sherry to contact Alex Sally and Don Johnson, and see from city manager to city manager where the three cities stand on interest in this idea.
And I will support...
And I would like to see the MDOT letter.
And one more thing, Mr. Sherry, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Next planning commission, I mean, one, but going with you, I mean, I'm there, I mean, and support your idea with them, and give me type of input, and hopefully I have information from the city manager, and then we can go through with the city commission, if the city commission supports, I mean, isn't that the proper procedure?
And I'd like to make it clear, if you are going to the city managers, at this point, I would not advocate anything more than a study to see what this would cost or what this would involve. I'm not saying that we need to go out there and raise the funds to do it tomorrow, that's obviously not, not right. What I'm suggesting is that we, we get, put a study together, see what, everybody's guessing is what this is going to cost, and it's going to cost a lot of money, but we don't know what it's going to cost until someone does a study on it.
Well, the study is going to cost.
Yes, the study's going to cost something, but it's going to be a lot less than the actual...
Well, there's no doubt about it, but you're still talking on large costs even for a study.
It's fascinating, Mr. DeCosta's put together some different documents that he had on Facebook that were showing some projects, like the St. Louis project that connects over a freeway where the arch is, and then a Cincinnati project and stuff, and it, I mean, it would go so far towards connecting sort of the cities in, in a way to make it safer as people are trying to cross north and south, across crazy six ninety-six.
And just, Mr. Mayor, if you could, Mike, I mean, coordinate with the city manager, I mean, it would make it just, and if there's, if there's a problem, then let the city commission know, but I know Sherry's very open to working with you on this, and...
It would be helpful if I'm copying on the emails, even though, you know, I, I don't like to correspond via email when it comes to city business, as you know that, and the planning commission has been warned about that. I know that you expressed that the same, the same desires to Mr. Bolach, the chairman of the planning commission just last month, and it was his recommendation after he talked to me, that you bring this formally to the planning commission this month. Unfortunately, that meeting was canceled, but it's coming up soon, and I'm expecting that's going to be something that may or may not be brought up at that time.
And Commissioner Perry, I would say that it's, it's nice to say that capping this would make it safer to get across six ninety-six, but we do have the service drive at great, so unless you're capping it and doing something above the ground, you're still going to have to walk across the service drive, and then once you're across the service drive, you're on a sidewalk, until you get to the next part of the service drive, and then you cross the service drive, so...
It's very insecure, yeah.
On its face, I don't see how capping Woodward makes it, or capping the freeway, makes it safer to cross the service drive or to cross Woodward. And I'd hate to have something go too far with everybody thinking that this is the great Mecca for safety, when unless you learn to levitate those people over that, that route, or unless you also sink that route, and I don't know how you further sink that route with everything else that's on there, I don't see how that helps from the standpoint of making it safer to cross those streets. I fully understand the concept of developing air rights, and that's been talked about before. And that's essentially what, you know, Mike is presenting, that the state would, or the federal government would presumably still own the roads, they would pay to cap it, and then they would grant us ownership of the air rights over that, so that any development over that comes to our tax coffers, not theirs. That's a lot different than safety. I, from what I've seen so far, I don't see a big improvement in safety. I'm not saying it can't happen, I'm just saying I haven't seen it.
And Mr. DeCosta, I think, could share a couple, he can send you a couple links that I think will show you, because, I mean, it's a fascinating plan, how it really changes it, and you do change the amount of lanes and how traffic is handled on those things. It's a, it's like a huge concept, it's not just...
I think that's why it warrants further study, because there's a lot of things, there's a lot of questions, I don't disagree, there's a lot of questions, especially cost, especially design, of what that space is, is it green space, is it developable land, who knows? But I, I think we need to understand what, what we're getting into before we actually do it, or support anything. But the first step for anything would be to support studying the idea. So I, I understand going before the planning commission is right, which I was, I was getting mixed signals on whether to come to the camp planning commission or the, or the city commission first. Now that I have a clear direction, I can go before the planning commission and at least say that they need to say something.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, thank you. Mr. DeCosta, I just want to thank you for getting up tonight and kind of bringing this before the body. I know the mayor and Sherry have a long history with, with this issue, and they have a lot of experience dealing with this, but I appreciate you bringing this back, because I do think it deserves reconsiderations. I think times change, things change, expectations of regions change, and maybe the expectations and what was appropriate for six ninety-six many years ago are not the same things that are appropriate or necessary for six ninety-six Woodward today. I agree with the mayor, and I've been thinking about this, you know, okay, if we cap this and we have pedestrians here, I, I don't have that answer, I don't have that magic genie that says, "This is the plan," but one thing that excites me is there's a lot of smart people out there who may, once they wrap their heads around it, say, "This is your solution, and this is the price tag, and if you guys are willing to pay this price or, or invest this, this buy-in fee, a study or some sort, this, this could be the result." I don't want to kill that in its infancy, because I do think that we do owe it to ourselves as a community to kind of solve some of those problems there. One thing I think is something that's, you know, we're, we're all concerned with, is getting ourselves and our families from one side of Woodward to the other side of Woodward, or getting ourselves and our families from one side of six ninety-six to the other side of six ninety-six without using a motorized vehicle. I love, I love seeing the kids ride their bikes to the pool, I love seeing that, but I, I'm really cautious about my own children because of where our house is riding their bikes. Now, I'm not saying what may develop would be a solution to that problem, but I would be, I would be hopeful that if we started a procedure that talked about, hey, the big, big, all-encompassing, let's cap six ninety-six, well, you can't do that, but you might be able to do this little sliver of a thing and might solve the Woodward overpass issue. That's an opportunity that I don't want to, you know, like I said, kill before it really produces any kind of usable information. So I agree with my colleagues here, I think there's a process, you know, the planning commission does have a role, obviously you are a member, I think there is a little two-hats thing, but I would encourage you, as a little, you know, I know you're wearing two hats, don't let one hat destroy your, your motivation wearing the other hat, because as a private citizen, as, as a member of the planning commission, you do have responsibilities as a representative, but as a private citizen, you do have a responsibility to follow your heart and, and push for, for what you believe in, and I would encourage you to continue doing that. One thing I've learned is that, you know, government's a big, a big, it's a big beast, and it, it can do wondrous things, and it can do, you know, it can make things very difficult. So I think this is a long process. If, if, if it does happen, it would take many, many years, but I would, I would encourage you in, in continuing that fight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm George Lanko, thirty-two Open Park, I listened with interest to Mr. DeCosta's presentation because I'm big into non-motorized transit and have been in the city as long as many of the longest of us. I think Mike is to be credited for coming up with a solution, even though it's only the essence of a solution, not a full solution, but I'd encourage this body to consider that, really, we know upfront that this will not be a Pleasant Ridge solution. The study itself, or the capital investment, we can't float it, it cannot be done, it will have to be an intergovernmental solution. I think some of the winds are changing, just as evidenced by the Rails-to-Trails bridges over Telegraph over seventy-five, that honestly, I don't know if that's federal funding or state funding, but certainly the local municipalities did not pay for those bridges. This solves a real problem, and I just hope that we don't lock this into process, or think of this narrowly as a Pleasant Ridge solution, because we know right out the gates that we cannot cap the overpasses. Thank you.
Any other items on the agenda? On to the agenda, governmental reports.
Hello, I'm Ann Curmiller, I am from the school board, I was here a few months ago. So the only thing, I was just going to come in and give you guys an update on our strategic planning right now. As you know, we've had the Champions meeting, and we've had a ton of people show up, and I really, really appreciate it, after I came and spoke to you guys, was it the end of May, beginning of June? I don't know, June, was it June? And asked for more people to come, and having to say that at the beginning, by our last Champion meeting, that was our biggest show. So they always say that the meetings dwindled, 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 but our meetings grew and grew and grew and grew, which is, I think, a testament to the area that we live in and the community that we serve. So what we did right now is, last week, we had a board retreat where the board, the administration sat down with Project Innovations, and they presented a lot of the same data that we saw in the Champions meetings, and we had a chance to hear them give us their opinions and talk about getting our real strategic plan together. It's not together yet, we still have another retreat at the end of this month, and then we're getting together again next month, but I'm thinking that by August, we'll have something that, and it will, all of these are public, so anybody who wants to show up, you can go onto the Ferneal Public Schools website. And please, I mean, for me, the more the merrier, I like having everybody interacting there and getting the emails and hearing people's opinions, because some of the stuff that we're thinking about doing, they're big things, and we're having, like we all know with the finances, it's having to be a little bit more creative than maybe we would have been a few years ago, and getting all, everybody's buy-in, everybody's opinion is, I think, the only way that this is really going to work. So thank you so much, I really appreciate, everybody, you know. Our next retreat is on July twenty-seventh, and we're actually not going to be discussing the strategic plan at that, but we are going to be talking about our procedures. And actually, and Perry has been nice enough to come to a few of our meetings, one, one so far, right? Where we've been talking about, two, okay? We've been talking about how our committee structures are, how to make them more inclusive, how our actual board meetings are, to make it so that way people feel more comfortable coming up and presenting issues, and it's a less threatening environment for them. and it's a less threatening environment for them. So we're at the beginning of a lot of stuff like that. So other than that, it's the middle of summer, and I'm totally enjoying it, even though there's actually way more work for school boards to do in the summer, which is something I wasn't expecting. But that's it. I don't really have anything else. I just wanted to kind of give you guys the non-update update on the strategic plan, I guess, that we're still working really hard, lots of conversations are going on. Reading all the really fun things, sorry, no, I was about to end, was, at all the Champions meetings, everybody got a chance to write down comments, and some short, and some really long. And it's been really nice being able to sit down and read through all these anonymous, very frank, honest comments and commentary on all sorts of different subjects. And find out that really, even though a lot of us, we have, there's a lot of consensus going on in our community, and everybody is on the same page in a lot of areas where I think that they might think that there might not be as much consensus, so.
Probably unfair and premature question, but you're here tonight, so I'll ask you.
Oh, good.
Have you guys had any opportunity to at least discuss among yourselves the latest proposal on the Lansing on the county-wide school districts or the intermediate school district model?
I have not done that. And in fact, I'll talk to Kevin Deegan Kraus. He's our Lansing representative. We're trying out a new thing in the board where each one of us has, like, this year, you guys are my responsibility. And Kevin took on Lansing. So next year, another one of us will be Lansing, but I'll go and ask him about that. And maybe he'll come with me next month then, and he'll talk about that. Because he's been going up there for a-
It'd be nice to hear your guys' perspective, and you know, we read what we read in the free press. And it's nice to hear about the saving of money and pooling of resources for transportation and that type of thing. But we don't hear what we might give up in doing that.
Yeah, I definitely think that moving forward, that we're going to have to do some combining, especially to retain what we consider a full-service school district, which we're really proud of right now. And there have been some things that we've been doing, like our technology. We've been also providing technology to the city of Ferndale. And I imagine as it goes forward, we'll be trying to create more relationships with not only other school districts, but even more cities, especially since we already serve four different municipalities. It would make a lot of sense to start combining some of that stuff and maybe find cost savings for all of us. But that is not my department right now. So I will ask Kevin if he'll come with me next month, and then he can give you, or he could just give me a little runover, and then I can bring it back to you.
Just so you have a heads up. It's not always an August meeting, so call ahead.
I will call ahead. Thank you very much for the heads up. And, you know, it'd be okay if you didn't have one.
I have one quick question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I was looking on the website today, and there's a really great summer meal program that school has set up. And I thought that was really cool. And, you know, so that anybody who may know of families who are really tight, you know, with their food budgets and things like that, it is a great, it looks like a beautiful solution for families that are food insecure.
It's really nice and nice, I think, the nice thing, you don't have to do any sort of proving. You don't have to tell them who you are. You don't have to do anything. All you do, you show up, and your kids get to eat for free. Now, I don't know, is this year, but last year, just the kids could eat, because-
It looks like it's for under 18.
Yeah, so the kids and I would go up there when I would be working on something at Roosevelt, actually. And my kids would hang out, and then they would get to have free lunch program. And we serve a lot of people, a lot of children.
That's beautiful.
Lunch.
I know there was a schedule on the FerndaleSchools.org site, and that was really cool.
I was going to mention that, but I was like, I don't remember what it is. But I do know that we serve some lunches at the Ferndale High School.
And breakfast at some places, too.
Oh, and breakfast as well. And that, it's been very exciting, because, you know, Ferndale, we're in the midst of so many renovations over there. So you kind of get to, like, peek when you're going for the lunch program. So I know that, I haven't gone yet, but I know that there's several other parents that I've talked to who have been like, "I don't know if I fit the lunch program, just, I could be at the theater." You know, so if you're interested in that, it's a way to get a sneak in, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Any other governmental reports? Committee liaison reports, Commissioner Kriziek.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, with the Recreation Commission, I want to let everybody know that the Ice Cream Social will be Wednesday, July 17th, at 6:00 PM. The event will be at Gainesboro Park. It will feature the bouncers, obstacle courses, and more. Legend the Band will perform their friendly 60s rock and roll show. That's the Friendly 60s Rock and Roll Show. This year, we will feature improvised ice cream and toppings. So come on by. We're stepping it up a little bit this year. That'll be Wednesday, July 17th, at 6:00 PM in Gainesboro. Okay, and another, this has been really exciting, and I thank everybody who made this happen. Make sure you check out the DIA Inside Out artwork around Pleasant Ridge. There are five pieces throughout the city. The locations include City Hall, Memorial Park, the Community Center, Cork, and Gainesboro Park. Look for special events and tours focusing on the art in the area and neighboring cities. And the DIA will also, in conjunction with the Recreation Commission, sponsor a trip to the DIA next Thursday for our 50-and-overs. It'll be free transportation, a light reception, and a chance to view our showcase art pieces at the DIA itself. Because these aren't the actual pieces, your productions. You go downtown, you see the real thing. If you're really, if you're interested in that, and I wish I, this is one of those opportunities, I wish I was over 50, but- Please register for this exciting event at Four Ridge, and that's next Thursday. And the last home swim meet of the 2013 season will be tomorrow night at the pool at 6:00 PM. So if you can, come out and support the Piranhas as they swim for victory. One other thing I'd like to announce, the Recreation Commission in August will be having a box castle event. Where we have the kids, we're going to design a castle made of, you know, refrigerator boxes, washing machine boxes, any kind of boxes you have laying around, we'll lay out on the grass, and the kids can kind of crawl through. And hopefully, that'll be a lot of fun. But one thing we need to pull off that event is anybody who may be getting, or, you know, receiving a washing machine or a refrigerator in the next month, please let Scott know, and he'll go over there on his bike and pick it up. And make sure that the kids have enough boxes to crawl through, and that's in August. So that's all for Recreation. Thanks, Mayor.
Commissioner Bushin, Planning Commission DDA.
Planning Commission DDA did not have a meeting last month at the coffee. We had some input from residents. I have taken some notes, and we will be discussing those. Other than that, nothing new.
Commissioner Robinho, Historical Commission.
Historical Commission is having their antique sale, October 4th, 5th, and 6th at Ridge Road. Last year, we had nine sellers. This year, we have 10 residents that have already signed up before we even had sent out the invitations to the antique sellers. So I think it's going to be a great success, and we're looking forward to putting it on and having fun with it. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Perry, the other committees.
Thank you, Nia Kermula, for giving the school update. The Woodward Transit Alternatives Analysis has a tentative date to meet next Tuesday to take a bus trip up and down Woodward with the mission of sort of looking at locations for transit stops. Just making, you know, looking at all of the different geographic issues as you go up and down the road. This is going to be mostly just the committee doing it and looking at it. And then those are recommendations that the organization, Parsons, Brakerhoff, and all the other organizations consider. We've been discussing, I've been trying to push for a stop around nine and a half mile, you know, south of Woodward Heights, which could truly benefit Pleasant Ridge from a transit-oriented development location. And it could make it very easy, or if we can cap 696 somehow. The Woodward, the WA3 has also, they have completed the hands-on study portion of the complete street study. The discussions have included, you know, especially when they walked, you know, several of the residents came on the walking tour. And they really discussed, and one of their goals is slowing traffic speeds, considering reducing the number of lanes, which helps make it safer as people are trying to cross Woodward and crossing 696. Also, having a slow lane on the far right that is next to where parking happens, and also reverse diagonal parking is one of the ideas that they will be presenting to us later. They look at a lot of pedestrian crossing solutions, like, one of the areas they were talking about, an elevated pedestrian. And it's not highly elevated. It almost becomes like a speed bump to help slow down traffic maybe as it's going up that Main Street area. Because there's actually a walking, I never really realized there's pedestrian crossing at that Main Street entrance area on the southern part of it. And then, and these are lots of solutions that really talk about keeping the trees and everything. And then they are working very closely in conjunction with the Woodward Transit Group and the M1 Rail to coordinate all of these different solutions so that they'll be able to have the best, like, walkable, livable solutions for all of the Woodward corridor. And so they're hoping by this fall or winter to be able to share some initial concepts and ideas to the Planning Commission and to the City Commission. But then also, they should have final recommendations in the spring. And then the WA3, one more thing have, well, two more things. They have, they have signed a purchase agreement for the Ford Highland Park Administration Building. And we need to close by October 1st. So the mission is, by October 1st, we need to diligently work to raise the $100,000 in matching funds on, to close that, to close that deal.
Is that the Picat Plant, I think?
Nope. This is the one right on Woodward that's in Highland Park, the Ford Model 2.
Okay, the Model 2, okay.
And it's, you know, it's in terrible shape. I mean, you cannot actually access the building. But the Picat Plant's a very cool place, but this is, I think, one of their goals. But they also want to make it more economically self-sustained, thank you. Because they want it to be very much about business development down there in that whole Highland Park area, because you have 103 acres, and many of those old historic buildings are still there. You know, this building is an Albert Kahn building, and it's still, there's so much, just, as rough of shape as it's in, it's still so beautiful. So it's very cool. So if you have any interest in helping, you know, helping figure out the funding solutions for this, and there are some really good ideas that some neighbors have already brought me. But just email me at aperry@cityofpleasantridge.org. And then the one last thing is September 20th through October 7th, there's going to be something called the AJ's Assembly Line Concert in Highland Park. And this is going to help raise money for hopefully that plan for the Ford Highland Park Administration Building. And it's going to break the Guinness Book of World Records for the longest continuous concert of 400 hours. So maybe you have a band and you want to participate, or if you want to be a sponsor, or your companies may want to sponsor it. I know they're talking to all the car companies and ad agencies and suppliers. And so it's a really great event that will benefit, you know, this WA3 project, but also many other projects around Highland Park. So that's it.
Who did you say was sponsoring that? Not WA3, but AJ?
Yeah, that AJ's Assembly Line Concert, and the WA3 is one of the benefactors from it.
Is that the same AJ who had the place in Ferndale that used to do the Guinness Book of World Records stuff?
Yes, and he had the Danny's.
Danny Wood.
Yes. So it should be very interesting.
Thank you. Next item is the Consent Agenda. Sure.
Mayor, there's one item on the consent agenda this evening. This proclamation that's proposed is a, was drafted after the June City Commission meeting. I believe it was Commissioner Kriziek that asked us to take a look at this. It is a resolution declaring June as Gay Pride Month. I modeled the proposed resolution after the one received from the city of Ferndale, and then did a little bit more research online to find some examples. So it's a, I put it on the consent agenda, so if you want any discussion, you need to have a motion to take it off the consent agenda.
I understand there may be people here who want to comment, so is there a motion to take it off the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
So off the consent agenda. Commissioner Kriziek, would you like to introduce this proclamation or this motion, and then we can open it up for public discussion?
So moved, Mayor.
Is there support?
I support.
I understand there are people here who may want to address the commission about that. This would be the time.
My name's Kurt Opel. I'm at 120 Applefield. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. Just wanted to take this opportunity to voice my objections to having June as a Gay Pride Month based on three things. One, that it promotes a specific lifestyle. Two, that it exposes children needlessly to sexuality. And that, three, it is offensive to a majority of religious people. Number one, you know, it promotes a specific lifestyle, and I guess the question is, do we want to promote a particular lifestyle? I mean, we certainly do not have, you know, if this was in place, would we also have a, you know, Marriage and Family Pride Month? And so that's, and as far as exposing children needlessly to sexuality, I have personally been, recently with the DoMong decision up at the Supreme Court in Washington, I was there personally. And there, as well as at many scenes that we've seen across the nation, whenever there is a, some sort of a display of homosexual pride or rights or whatever, there were inappropriately dressed and acting people that really, I'm not sure that we want our children to be exposed to those type of things. Secondarily on that, homosexuality is a sexual preference, and it is inherently about sexuality. So you can't really separate that from it. And so I, yeah, we're exposing unneedlessly our children. Thirdly, I'm a believing Christian, and I believe that God has created all people and that He loves them all dearly. But I also believe that homosexuality is wrong, as is gluttony or adultery. And I just don't feel that that's something that we want to promote. We wouldn't promote adultery. We wouldn't promote gluttony. So why would we promote this? And so as a Christian, I am offended by this, and I object to this. And actually, any devout Jew or any devout Muslim would register the same kind of objections. And so I pray that you guys will consider these three points before we consider this resolution. The bottom line, I believe, is that instead of remaining neutral, we're actually going in and setting a precedence, and we're, instead of remaining neutral, we're, because this is a very divisive issue. And I've, like I say, you know, I've seen it firsthand, how divisive it can be. And I don't think that's what we want to do. Appreciate the time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
All right, I'm going. Rob Sek at Ave Fairwood, homosexuality is not about sex. Heterosexuality, heterosexual sexuality is not about sex. It's about love. Finding somebody you're compatible with.
Why don't you look at us and make this-
I'm sorry. It's about love and finding someone you're compatible with, and you want to spend your life with. It's not all about sex. I mean, you get old, I can't speak for- I mean, you get old, I can't speak for Mr., but I'm thinking as we all get older and stuff, the sex fades and goes away. It's not about sex. So I'm totally disagreeing with you, sorry.
My name is Anna Opal, 120 Maple Field. I just want to say, we're just asking to remain neutral. It is a divisive and, and, where I'm looking for, isolating, can be isolating, and it can be violent. I just saw it today at the Gay Pride March in Seattle in which there were some, two people who were carrying signs expressing their religious beliefs and they were attacked and the police had to get involved. The bottom line is, is what was said earlier, Pleasant Ridge is pleasant, it's a wonderful place to live. And we're just asking to remain neutral. Why isolate other religions that may disagree with this? Why, you know, why make us uncomfortable or even as parents? As my husband mentioned, we were there, we were in a group, we were marching peacefully. There were people dressed inappropriately that targeted towards our children. They, I mean, I won't go into detail what they were not wearing, basically. Police had to get involved. I mean, you're just opening up a large bag of worms that is going to be more divisive than it is to bring this community closer together. And that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any motion from the commission? Any discussion from the commission?
Mayor, if I could?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody who came out tonight and spoke and agreed what is a divisive issue. I know it takes courage to step up there and, and speak to your beliefs in front of this room and, and to the wider city, it takes courage. But, and I, I want to emphasize I, I respect people who disagree with this proclamation. Because I will acknowledge it is, is not a neutral proclamation, is promoting. And you, you hit on, on a word that I think was key, and that, and that was neutrality. And for me, and, and this is a very difficult position I'm in, I'm a representative of this community, I'm also somebody who has my own beliefs, I have to balance the two. And I want to commit to everyone in this room that I take that charge very seriously. My feelings are that the neutral position has, in this case, been the position for far, for far too long. I know I've seen people that I love and care about suffer because of the nu, the neutral position, where comments were made to denigrate who they are as a people, and the neutral position allowed that to happen. So I, I recognize the neutral position. I think the time has come to move beyond that neutral position and to say proudly that yes, we are respective of people's views, but this is not something that is, not something that should be divisive. I agree with you, it is divisive, it shouldn't be divisive. I, I have many gay people who I care very deeply about, and to them, it is who they are. And it is the bravest thing to me to witness them be who they are in spite of the, the challenges of, of the broader society. So I think it's time that communities across the country signal to those individuals in those communities that we acknowledge your, your humanity, we acknowledge who you are and, and who you are contributes to, to our, our community and our well-being as a community. I, I, I did not bring this to the attention of the commission to be divisive. I felt like the time was right, we had passed an ordinance that stated, that was in support of these values. Our neighboring community had supported a similar proclamation. So my hope in advancing this proclamation is to not advance, I guess, one or the other, really is to communicate or facilitate understanding. And that's what Black History Month, for me, as a, as a young white suburban boy growing up in the absence of really African-American companions, Black History Month opened up my, helped open up my world to, you know, the struggles of that community. Similar proclamations for women's history. The, the gay and lesbian community have struggled for hundreds of years to, to the point that they're at now. And I think the time has come when we acknowledge them as proper members and full members of this community. And hopefully this proclamation does what other month proclamations have done and facilitate that understanding. And that's my hope.
Commissioner Krzyzewski, a middle ground, and it doesn't mean we have to find a middle ground, but listening to the back and forth tonight and looking at the, some of the preamble with respect to this resolution, a, and we are past June anyway, and we adopted Ferndale's by reference last month. But going forward, maybe what we ought to be doing is declaring a month anti-discrimination month. Because our human rights ordinance does not talk purely about protecting discrimination against the gay, lesbian, bi, and transgender communities, but discrimination based upon all the protected groups under state and federal law, race, religion, national origin, that type of thing. I would throw that out for consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would consider that as a great proclamation in addition to the proclamation that we have before us today as June as Gay Pride Month. So I do think there is an opportunity to, to speak specifically to the issues that you've raised with a month dedicated to anti-discrimination. But I do feel strongly that June should be dedicated to recognizing gay pride in the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there support? Do you want to talk? Do you want support?
I do want to talk. I mean, we already passed one, we already passed one in June, correct?
We endorsed the Ferndale proclamation, which this is substantially based upon.
Based the same thing.
Yeah.
So are you...
But we did also talk about having one drafted to come from Pleasant Ridge and being on this agenda.
Right. Thanks.
Is there support?
Support.
Further discussion? May I take a vote?
Commissioner Krzyzewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. For next year, Sherry?
Yes.
I would suggest that we have a anti-discrimination, just broad anti-discrimination by which the resolution is law.
That's fine, we'll do it.
The City Managers' Report.
So we need someone to volunteer to serve on the Board of Review again. It seems like I'm always asking for this. But if you know of someone, or if you are available, I know it's, not everyone is available, it takes three full-time days in the month of March, so if you weren't, unless you want to take vacation time, that's hard to do. But we need another person for the Board of Review. And other than that, the Board Review meets for about 15 minutes in July and December and it's, it's afterward.
And the qualifications are a registered voter?
Yes, the same as the qualifications for City Commissioner or any of the other committees, registered voter.
Registered voter living in the city for a year.
A reminder that nominating petitions are available for the Office of Mayor and City Commission. The City Clerk has issued three to date, and those will, must be returned to the City Clerk by August 13th. Then I have a question for you. In the past, we have sometimes not, not scheduled a meeting in either July or August, depending on the amount of business items. The July agenda was pretty light, but we originally had a zoning board scheduled just prior to it, and so that's why I didn't suggest this meeting. So I'm asking you this evening, I have no idea if there is a need as far as business items, I don't anticipate that, but you know, who knows? Do, do you want the administration to just plan that there will be a meeting?
I would suggest we haven't had meetings in both months in probably 10 years, unless there's pressing business reasons for it, but we've not had the hours meeting.
I agree with that.
Yes, I don't see a business.
I agree with everybody.
Because otherwise we'll sit here listening to layups and reports in the consent agenda.
I know. And then I have, as you know, the, the meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting that was scheduled for today was canceled, needs to be rescheduled. I have two additional applications for variances, they're, all three of these are involved and it's going to take some time. So I would suggest that you schedule this on a separate night, as I mentioned in my quick email about a date. I'm wondering if, if everyone would be available for July 25th, that's a Thursday, it's very quick.
You obviously haven't read your email.
No.
I gave you all the dates, I wasn't available, and that's why.
Do you remember what date was available?
Uh, July 30th was available, July 29th was one other one you threw out that's very iffy.
Jerry's out of town after the 25th. Threw what, Jerry?
Uh, to the 4th or 5th. I can much know.
We can't delay these people then.
No more four people?
I can do the 25th.
Is everybody good for the 25th, other than the mayor? Are you good for the 25th?
The 25th is a Thursday?
Yes.
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 Okay, then I'm, we need to publish the ad, so, okay. So July 25th for ZVA. And then I just, I expected this would be a fairly quick meeting, and as you know, we have a closed session, so I won't keep you but just another minute. I know you've, I've asked you to tolerate me before, but I promise it won't be that long. I wanted to just share a funny story. I've been trying to clear out the basement a little bit because it's been a long time since I've worked down there and cleaned up some of the old files that need to be shredded. And I came across one of the old, old, old computers that I swear it looks as big as this room. Once we get rid of that, we'll have some space. And then I also found a box of stuff that apparently I had packed away some years ago. And in that box were the contents of my desk. A desk, I don't know what desk it was. But there was an ashtray. And it reminded me that in 1987, one of the, and I didn't have a desk because I was a postal clerk, but in 1987, every desk had the big IBM Selectric typewriters. And everybody had an ashtray, because everybody smoked. And the residents that came in, we had a couple ashtrays on the counter because they came in and they smoked and they, you know, stop and talk and everybody would be smoking. And that continued to, I think, 1990 and stopped. And then I also remember the, when I went from the IBM Selectric, you know, there were no computers in City Hall, to this Panasonic word processor. It had a screen that the words actually moved along. And I remember the feeling, thinking, you know, this is really big time. I think it was controversial when the city asked the foundation to buy its first computer and the foundation said, probably not, it's not that important. And, you know, who knows what's going to happen with the computer age? But we eventually did get one and everybody shared that one computer. So those were some things as I was cleaning the basement I was thinking about. And I'm not going to tell you, I have so many stories that I could tell and, you know, your, your mind is just flooded with some memories. In my first two weeks, the city treasurer and the interim city manager went in the back room, they were shouting words at the time I had never heard before. I had to call the police, I'm two weeks on here, because they were going to piss-fuck. And I thought, what kind of crazy place have I been hired into? You know? I mean, those are just some really fun stories. So I wanted to tell you some of this. Can't even say it. And tell you that I have really had some great memories here. And I wanted to announce that I'm going to retire. I'm not saying, I'm not saying I'm just a woman that's emotional sometimes. I wanted to announce that I will be retiring in December of this year. And I want you to know that I have a heart full of gratitude. And there's so many here that I love. And I will tell some stories at my retirement party that I'm looking forward to. And so for the record, I just wanted it to become part of the record that I will be retiring this year. Thank you. And that's all I have, so I hope it won't be too long.
Sherry, not for your retirement, but thank you for all your years of service.
Yes, yeah. It's been a great time. And I'm going to be around until December, so I'm not dying, I'm not going to say goodbye, you know?
I get to edit some of those stories. I can post the pictures.
No, there'll be no edits.
Other business?
Mayor, if I could? Thank you. The other business I have is not as earth-shattering as our city manager's announcement. Look forward to working with her for the next few months. And of the mayor, I applaud her on her years of services, community, it's incredible when you, when you start throwing around terms like 1987 and ashtrays.
Yeah, right.
One thing I've been trying to do with not very much success is get, get the butt club off the ground. I'm going to kick it a few more months here and see if anybody would like to join me Thursday, July 30th, 7:00 PM, at Stevenson Park, underneath the new trees that the garden club has so graciously improved that corner of our city with. Book is called Cosmopolitanism. I worked all month on, on saying that word in public, so I got through it. But to spark some interest, and I think, I think some of the issues that we've discussed tonight are, are relevant to the topics discussed in this book, and I'd just like to read a brief passage and see if, if this would spur discussion and hopefully we'll get some people out on Thursday, July 30th. But this is just a passage from the book. It says, "Each person you know about and can affect is someone to whom you have responsibilities. To say this is just to affirm the very idea of morality. The challenge then is to take minds and hearts formed over the long millennia of living in local troops and equip them with ideas and institutions that will allow us to live together as the global tribe we have become." So the, the issues and the ideas that he discusses in this book are very relevant to today's society. And I'm not all the way through it, but it has been, you know, it's been a pretty heady read so far. But I would encourage anybody to, to check out the library or your local bookstore and join me on July 30th. Thank you.
Which, which by the way, is a Tuesday, not a Thursday.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just trying to help you out there.
That may explain why nobody shows up this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other other business? Is there a motion to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privilege information?
Mr. Mayor, move the City Commission moving to closed session to discuss attorney-client privilege information.
Support, support.
Yes.
Mayor, you take a vote.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyzewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. We are reset. We are reset.